My name is John Allen, moved here about four years ago from Denver. And we moved here for three main things. We moved here for a beautiful natural environment, specifically around the trail. We moved here for charming downtown and we moved here for a family-friendly community that is incredibly well-supported. I feel like putting up five-story buildings are kind of against all of those things. And doing it in this wonderful environment that we can really capitalize on to green tourism. People come to the Spiderville from all over for that beautiful view of the river in addition to delicious cider and donuts. People come to Dexter or things like that for the trail to ride on. We moved here instead of Celine or Chelsea or Ann Arbor for that small-town feel. We contribute well, you can tell because we can afford to live on Bridgeway and we feel really grateful. And part of that is because our brains are fresh from having the trees, having the natural environment, being able to easily access that wonderful opportunity for exercise. And I'm worried that if we put up big cement blocks, I love the idea of paying tribute to Mr. Pellon, who built those bridges or designed them. And if we can do that some way in the community someday, great. But I think we're missing out on what that particular part of real estate in Dexter or natural environment, whatever you want to look at it as, can really offer our community. And I think fire truck is a great point on investment alone. But I think we need to see the bigger picture. And then putting in residents for 33 individuals, probably not families versus homes or places that are going to bring families and allow more people in, I think, is something I would really hope he would consider, so.
My name is Jordan Adams, 822 Bridgeway Drive. As pretty much everyone has already spoken on the subject. You know, why can't I move to here last fall? Your beautiful backyard, trees, Mill Creek in the background. And to see towers going up inside of our house, that's something I'm looking forward to. I do think that space could be better utilized as, you know, I know before I talked about being a brewery bike shop. I feel that I'm a big biker and a lot of times people bike, well, all the time, people bike into Dexter as a place of shots for Hatwood Point, turn around, go back to Ann Arbor. Chelsea, B2B and the trail expanding. I feel like we need to utilize the space that's more of a trailhead, a head for breweries or restaurants, stuff to bring more bikes in that they feel that they have a space. Because right now bikers don't have space. There's kind of a pub or a cafe or the diner. If you had a space that was more geared towards bikers to come in and have plenty of light parking, you know, a place to get something to eat, something to drink, a bike shop with food made. I feel that that space would be much more useful for business or restaurants versus more houses. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Brian Callen, I live at 8469 Parkbridge Drive. And concerning the development, back in March of 2022, the Mill Creek Brewery was proposed for that area and basically boo-booed and stopped because of parking issues. For one bike shop, Kinnan Reynolds and a small brew pot. The very idea that three towers would provide a more viable solution for space than a parking lot for one retail organization is absolutely ludicrous. And anyone considering that when you're comparing the two is not doing a service to the people that'll like it.
Hi, Jake Carroll, 8200 Bridgeway Drive. To answer your question, this is my dad here and I would not know what I was. My family and I moved here back to Michigan two years ago. We spent two years deciding where we wanted to live. We fell in love with Dexter, the people and engaged community and engaged local office. The events, all those things seemed fantastic and we decided to build here. And it has been great so far. Really concerned about that development. One of the things that we were excited about was some of the initiatives that were in the strategic plan are still big now. Some of those being becoming a border town, all the access for the community to come in here. People like myself didn't leave here before, but opted in and funded this for local businesses across the way. I was really surprised to hear this as an option. You always hear rumors when you look at housing and what developers might do, who might go up the local shops. But when we dug deeper and looked at things that were already decided on from this team, again, becoming a border town, having more access to the river, creating more opportunities for families to enjoy the space. And then all of a sudden being a three-story or rebuilding multiple-story development, that was really disappointing. It seems like a definitely exciting part of a growing town, a growing neighborhood. There's a lot of opportunity to build, high-rises elsewhere. That is such a unique piece of property that is on the river that provides so many resources and opportunities for families and local businesses. It would be a huge waste of an opportunity to fulfill on that strategic plan. Quite frankly, I didn't vote for any of you, I didn't live here. But moving forward, that will look, this is an issue for me, that I will look to representation that supports these issues and then puts value in these plans if they have. So, thank you.
Hi, my name is Natalie Mark and I live at 866 East Ridge Drive. And to just go on everything else, I have previous work in consulting. I was doing, let me say, my hotel, which is a little different. But when you do that, you go in and you research the entire community, what's driving people to come in, toward them, things like that. And when I think about this development and what it could be, you know, I get excited about things that will bring more people to the community, make it more to their feel, bring people downtown and it helps all the businesses. And it serves all of our people. When I think of a residential development, it doesn't serve anybody, you know? And it's a cement block across from the park. I frequent that park probably twice a week at least. And that would make a huge difference in our experience. I mean, it would be a big difference for the entire library park area. And I don't think it serves our neighborhood one bit. And I think that we have plenty of other very high-end residential places that are going in or in the process of being built. I don't think that's a need in our community at this point in time, if anything, we need more affordable housing. And like others said, I also think that, yeah, we don't have that much space along the river. This is one of our only downtown spots that we can build on and actually have the benefit of using it to our advantage. And I think that would just be a waste. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Michelle Scherstein. I live at 3249 East Ridge Drive. Most of the comments I was going to make this evening, many of my neighbors have already stated, so I'll speak those for now. I really feel like the proposed development is detracting from the charm of our downtown. One reason that my family moved here was to live in a nice, cute, it was a village, but a cute downtown area and not for something that's being overcrowded and not very aesthetic pleasing. I did read an article recently, if it was accurate, it said that for areas that are zone for residential, they can only put seven units on the one-and-a-half-acre size property that is there. And my understanding is that it's two to three times more units than that that would be rented into that space. And so I'm having some confidence that the planning people who devised the idea that we only can have seven units and one-and-a-half acres did it for a reason. And to have dozens more, dozens of condos there seems unwise. Also, my concern about cost to the current taxpayers, in addition to the fire truck needs to be able to fire a four- or five-story building. I also question how much capacity a water treatment plant can handle. And eventually, if we continue to add lots of residences, will we need to expand the capacity of that? And how much is that going to cost? And finally, since the developer is not a local person, I just ask you to really consider what motivation that developer is. It seems like it's all about profit. It's not someone who's local, who's invested in the longevity of our town and wanting it to thrive. It just seems like it's for purely profit. I did read an article that that developer recently did a project in Ann Arbor and it took five years to complete, being that that area is already one of our busiest, congested areas of town. Having five years to complete some sort of a project in a very busy part of town that already... It's a little difficult for me to get to and from. I am in the morning and I come home from work, also doesn't seem like a wise idea. I really urge you to consider strongly if we have other options for one who put there and start completing it. Am I allowed to talk from Dexter Township?
That's fine, just please give us your hand.
Okay, then Molek 13543 Edgewater Drive. I've been a summertime resident for 53 years out here. And I can tell you that Dexter is the best downtown in the area. And what you guys are proposing to do is going to change it and make it into something like Brighton or any other bigger town. And I think most of the people here are talking about it is that how it looks is why they moved here and why they want to stay here and raise their families and that. And I agree full-heartedly, it's that three-story one behind the gas station that's enough. If you put up that five-story when you're changing up the feel of downtown, I don't think you'd want to lose that. On that side.
Thank you.
Tom Yearsall, 10747, I'm a light group. Again, I'm not a city resident, I travel from between the bridge back and forth from one time to the other. My family got here in 2014 to Dexter from Ann Arbor for that small-town feel. Basically, all the comments that everybody's made here, I can echo the same thing. Parking, increase in traffic, good eyesore for five-story building, the additional lots of fire trucks that can reach the top. Yeah, not in support of it, I don't think it's a good look for Dexter. And it doesn't go with the small-town feel you moved here for. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ron Miller, I live at 7654 Forest Street, Dexter. Well, I'm planning to speak, but listening to the book speak, I want to speak to the kind of planning that takes place when these developments happen. And I would like to see the city be more thoughtful and open in the process of how it encourages development in the city. And so I think there was a, when there's a need like for recreational facilities and there's a need for businesses in the downtown area, you have a beautiful park that has, again, been a central figure in bringing people to this community. And starting to only respond to developers who have a particular interest in their properties being there and being the luxury high-rises or whatever, doesn't really fit with a thoughtful plan of looking at how does the city of Dexter look over the course of several years. I would rather see meetings with the DDA, meetings with the planning and zoning, all these meetings, and have the community have a chance to have real input on talking about how we use the park as a centerpiece of our landscape and we put things that are not as impactful on that, on that real estate. And think about businesses and people who come and then have access to the recreational facilities. And it's that kind of planning that I think would be, would suit the city of Dexter much more whole. To look and be thinking way out, not simply responding to the one-offs of developers who come in and want a piece of product. But look at how that quarter down Dexter Chelsea Road is going to look in five, 10 years, how the city is going to change itself and then how the park might be expanded too. Thank you.
Like Ron, Holly Baker, 975 Jackson Road. Didn't plan on speaking here, but I moved here in 1997 with my husband. We raised a family, we love it. I'm from California and let me, my friends in California, I live in Gouderville, but I tell them I don't. And then when they come here, they realize how lovely it is. We have to hold on to that. And I think using such a special place for a five-story condominium is ill-used. I have a beautiful picture of my daughter standing by that river before the dam was taken down. Thank you, Paul Cousins. And now it's a beautiful walking place. And I would like to know, I wonder what Paul Cousins would say if he was still alive.
My name is Michelle Scherstein, 985 Ann Arbor Dexter Township. Right, here we go. So I am an elected official, such as yourself, in Dexter Township, so I can understand the position you are in and having to make these difficult decisions that affect our life. But I am not here this evening as a Dexter Township representative, but as a resident who has grown up and raised my family in this community. I see many concerns as to why I oppose this development. Number one, our firefighters don't have a concrete home yet. We have not invested in a auto truck for public safety and we are still working to step the firefighters that we currently need and properly compensate the firefighters that we currently have. Number two, a big issue for me is our seniors still don't have a permanent home. And I think one of the most concerning is, except for quotes wrong about stuff for that location, and I strongly believe before anything is developed in that corner, traffic studies need to happen. As a person that travels in and out of Dexter, from Dexter Township to the city of Dexter, back and forth, kids that went to school, we have a business that we run in this area. Traffic isn't just a concern at 8:00, 9:00 in the morning and 4:00, 5:00 in the evening. It's a concern all day. And that wrong about definitely concerns me. So, other than that, I have concerns with the noise that could potentially ricochet off of this building when the train comes through, of course, that won't affect me. I live on the Mary Road, quite far out of the town. But for those individuals that live in our local development, such as West Ridge, I am concerned for the noise that could ricochet throughout the community. Other than that, it definitely could affect our local charm and this community. And I could see something much more positive for the community. So I appreciate you taking my time and listening to me today.
Is there anybody else that wanted to speak tonight on any topic other than that one? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you. Go ahead.
I just have one question and I know you can't answer me because you're not supposed to. I was born here, I was raised here.
Could you tell us your name and your address, please?
My name is Sally Coe, I live on Dexter V20.
Thank you.
And I just said, who thought this was a good idea?
Is there isn't anybody else?
We have one in that line.
Yes. For online, please let us know your name and your address.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Nate Pound, I'm the owner of 8180 Main Street. I live in Jeffords in Dexter. So I don't really know where to start and how to comment on all this because it's a pretty complex and long history to my owning that property. And from what it's started as, as Mill Creek Sports Center, pretty dilapidated building that needed to be cleaned. And I've invested quite a bit of money to clean that property. And first go-round back in 2017, we had plans to do a canoe kayak rental business and a deli and a beer garden, that was round one. What a lot of people, I don't think, understand is the investment to develop that property. And it's not just a blank piece of property. It has some significant challenges. And the cost to develop a restaurant brewery is significant. I have close to a million dollars in the property alone. The Mill Creek Brewery plans that were recently proposed pushed $3 million. It's hard to make a brewery restaurant go. And I'm tired of tiptoeing around the financial aspect of it because a lot of people don't understand what it takes to do these developments. And while they seem historic and like they may be beneficial and I appreciate the history of that property. I've spent years of blood, sweat and tears and collaborated with Paul Cousins for years over that property and what to do and how to fix it. And when I met Kelly in KLA Development, Kelly, by the way, the condo developer, lives and grew up in Ann Arbor and in Washtenaw County, also has a place in Pinkeye. She is a local person. This was a way out for me in a sense, but it also is one of the only ways that that property will be financially developed. Because there is no restaurant bike shop that can support a $4 million development on that piece of property. No other shops, no other, nothing else that anyone is going to come up with can support a $4 million development. That's what it takes to fix that property. Now, if the city and the county wants to see it as a park, that's a different story. But if anything is going in there, it's probably going to be housing or nothing at all. I could be wrong, somebody could knock on my door, ask to buy that property, and I will hand it over. I, again, I mentioned I live in Jeffords. And I know when I moved into Jeffords, I had numerous other Dexterites, citizens, bash the Jeffords development and say how it was going to be an eyesore for the city of Dexter. I don't think it is. I think it adds to the city. Two-thirds of the building are retirees who all frequent the restaurants and shops downtown regularly. If you talk to the local downtown businesses, they aren't bursting at the seams. They need more business. And who frequents the businesses downtown the most? The people that live in the city limits. Well, I appreciate Dexter is changing and not everyone loves that. I respect it, I appreciate it. But the reality is, it is a city now and that ship has kind of sailed. So there is no more Mill Creek Sports Center with a buckpole. There's a beautiful bridge, it's a beautiful town. I don't think it's going to lose its charm by having a few more condominium buildings put up for what seems to be a growing trend of retirees moving into the town because the ease of living in town is attractive. I don't know if I've said everything I needed to say. It's a pretty emotional thing for me because it's been seven long years of ups and downs and trying to figure out how to make that property work. Yeah, I think that's all I have. And if anyone has any questions, you know where to reach me. I've been in the spotlight trying to figure that property out for a long time. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Last chance, anybody, any comments that anybody wanted to make? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Hi, this is Jim Newsler and I reside at Dexter Township, 1281, continuing next drive. And this might be more of a historical tale, but in any case, my parents grew up here in Dexter. Everyone knew each other and whatnot. And they bought a cottage not far from here when I was about five years old. And I had friends out here and again, everyone knew their family. I ended up going to school there. I was lucky. But I've seen what it's become and people can't afford it. They're coming out this way, they're going to Chelsea. And I don't know if we should actually encourage that because I don't want to see another Ann Arbor in this location. And it's ridiculous. Ann Arbor is, I don't even go there. I don't want that to happen in Dexter. I like Dexter, I know very well. I just, I can't see the five-story building going down. And there's going to be more happening. So it's one of those things, and I think we have to look and say, hey, there's an issue here, we have to fix it. And I guess that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Okay. Thank you very much for all your comments. Next item on the agenda, declaration of complex interest. Any declarations to be made? Done. Approval of the agenda, is there a motion for the agenda, please?
I would to approve the agenda presented.
We have approved the agenda by Alleg, second by Swa. How is Swa?
I want to comment on 97 on the agenda, it wasn't clear in the packet. It asks a question about whether we're approving or not approving that license. So I would like to amend that. I don't say that we are recommended to approve that license because it's something we've done in the past and I don't really need to discuss it again. That's just discussion right now, I mean, other people have things to say, so. I mean, sure, I would like to make that amendment, sorry, thank you. Yeah, I would be inclined to pull K4 and K5. And K8, I mean, pull 4, 5, 7, and 8, just so we don't have to really discuss them. Without doing that right now.
So we can send agendas K4, K5, and 7 and 8 as N2, 3, 4, and 5?
Yeah.
As for the council rules and council member requesting anyone who can send a agenda and we pull off of the consent.
I have some questions on K3 if that's a go.
Okay, we'll make K3 as item S6. Any of this ever?
I would just like to point out that K3 and K4 are both things that we have seen before us with these numbers on them for a combination of things. And I have them right from here if anyone needs to see them. We've already looked at them in either an improved budget or a proposed budget that we've recently had work sessions on and have these numbers that seem to be in line with what we've already been okay with. that seem to be in line with what we've already been okay with.
Any other comments on the agenda?
I was not certified. So is this about to have the agenda tied?
I apologize. The motion is to approve the agenda with the changes of K seven to add recommend approved and then K four to new business, K five to new business, K seven to new business, K eight to new business, K three, then in six new business.
And yes? No. Michelle's?
Yes.
All right. Yeah. Schlapp?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, we have no public hearings on the agenda. Use cases in the package. Is the upcoming meetings list? Is there any comments or?
Uh, Cat Guard isn't on there for June, but our first meeting is June first. It's going to be one of the meetings dedicated to Western Washington housing folks. It's at the Wave Office on Jackson at twelve nine seven two.
So are you saying that the six seven meeting for Cat Baron is not six seven?
It's on. It's on the first.
I think it's going to be the second, third step. The housing group decided to move it to the second, third, sixth.
Okay, never mind that.
Oh, no, thank you. Sorry. Uh, reports. First report is Public Services Superintendent Tim Stewart.
Two weeks more. Any questions? I got a couple of these up.
I don't know if this is for you or someone else, but at work session or at a meeting, you talked about having those mid-street signs that say pedestrians, the right of way, the crosswalks, and like that, the ones that are by Dairy Queen. We talked about potentially putting those on Main Street near Alpine, but along Main Street. Springbound.
Yeah, down by gas station.
Yeah. So have you talked maybe to the Red and Black and Beacon and then we said, well, maybe a intermediate. I think that might feel effective. It's getting a little damp. I don't know if that's for you. Do you need more direction from council or?
I want to say, Dan, did we have one there before?
We've had two there. Two of them, like in front of Dairy Queen.
Like the ones in front of the Dairy Queen, but down, yeah.
So I'll talk to currency. Why they have moved to, I am a hundred percent. I'll tell you one personally.
Thank you. It's okay. Um, Tim, I want to say, you know, you told us last time that you were ahead of schedule with the power tower. I don't know. Thank you again for that. That's really great. And we'll see here that it's back in service. And does that mean that outside of our regular watering restrictions, people are allowed to use underwater now?
David was in that last Friday.
I just want to be sure that it lasts the I D hours.
The water shut down at Thompson Shore. Were you about? Were you down here?
Yeah, they had, they were working on bar pressure. It needed shut down to, you could fix it and put in some new valves in there too. So they've been doing a lot of stuff. They shut it down. First one was for the test and see to make sure it had been shut down. And then I think it was last week we did the shutdown.
Thank you.
So obviously the tower's up. That was my experience. Friday, we got it all ready to go and clearly back into level mold and we, the valve was leaking by and we knew that, but it leaked back before. A lot of times those valves they have packings in there that if you loosen them off, they basically seat themselves and it goes back normal. Well, that didn't happen. So we had to shut the tower down again, put it back in the pressure bolt, and then pump it down and realized that it was coming out of the top of a valve itself. So we had to get through in there and pull every bolt out one at a time and put on bolts in there. It was going to go. But Friday afternoon, three forty-five, it was already, so. Um, we started the construction as far as concrete work on Lexington and curves in the driveways from Oliver to York. I started last week. They're doing really good. They opened up some of the drives, around the driveways, the curves today and the other one tomorrow. Um, we started the pipeline of the curb boxes. I got started today and that's the only thing that we're going to do. So going there along with time down the day and hopefully keep going. Sure.
Uh, thanks. I have another question. I was chatting with the resident in our neighborhood in Dexter Crossing and she commented that how abrupt the entrance to her driveway is where the curve, I guess, as we call it, the curve cut is a curve cut. Um, pretty extreme. I've noticed it when I've gone to visit friends in the neighborhood, even more so than mine. And I think she had mentioned, I mean, she visited it on Lexington where we recently did work that was perhaps remedied or adjusted. I don't know. Can you tell me a little bit more about how the decision is made for that curve cut? Why it is the way it is and if future work anticipates making adjustments to that or what that process is like?
Can you say curve? I mean?
Like when you go to pull in your driveway, it's like a huge, you're going up a jump, you know?
So you're, so the curves, yeah, they have different types of curves. They have ones that step down pretty quickly and then feather into the driveways and then also ones that are, I call them soft curves, which is always like that, which put up around the main street. So I had to see the address and you have to address what they were waiting to answer.
Um, I mean, just come to my house for that matter. Um, I press and circle, but it's like at the tail end of Cambridge. Um, the last houses you're facing out towards the road. But I I have other friends, you know, live in the heart of Cambridge, talked about their need for a new driveway.
Yeah, and that stuff was done when they developed the original, obviously, but it's like, yeah, as far as doing something, I don't know what you're really doing.
Right. I just meant it's future road work. It, I think she commented that with the work that happened on Lexington, it seemed like those driveways were approved. And I didn't know if that was a conscious improvement or something that happened to happen. Um, or how like when streets are done, if there's some specific decision made about those driveway.
So weren't the dead in Lexington, they just would have gone to whatever the existing goals and shouldn't change anything. I had to go back and take a look, but had some, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
We've had a couple of residents that have bought like Corvassers, real low cars that came to the city and Michelle's house and mine, they have put the curb down, they have laid new concrete, they had to pay for all that so they could get their, you know, the low cars over that curb. I agree with them. Every time I go, I mean, you know where I live, that's part of town. The curb seems a bit much to me too, but we can, we can look at it when we do an old dog.
Right, right. So is that not easy to change when you go and like resurface the road, for example, that's typically part of?
Usually when you go and resurface, you're not going to touch your curb. It's a little crack or tore off a little bit.
I'll still take a look at it and see.
Yeah.
Thank you. Next item, Community Development Manager, Ms. Hubbard.
Cheltenham. Good evening. How are you doing this evening?
Good evening.
Excellent. Okay, before I go into my updates, any, any questions for me?
Um, I've got a report for that. Okay. Sorry. I'm just trying to get my, uh, can we email about this. I just remembered the corrections don't make work. So the self-storage, I'm just trying to remember back to those conversations that was it originally self-storage was allowed in industrial and not in R and D? And there was an error that it was added in R and D? Or can you remind me a little bit of the history of that? Prior to our new ordinance, self-storage units aren't even addressed. It's not used as allowed. And when the proposal for Second Street, um, the old area building came in, that applicant at that time went through the process of requesting amendment or the use um, which required an amendment to the zoning ordinance to allow um the self-storage in industrial, in the I one specifically. The property was master planned for R and D, but it was kind of a zone, the I one. Um, so there were multiple layers of complexity with the project, but ultimately City Council decided to deny the request to amend the ordinance to put self-storage in the I one district. That happened in May of twenty twenty-one. As we were going through the ordinance update, we knew we had to add, and the subcommittee knew, we had to add self-storage in as a use in the district. And as near as I can find, all of the notes, um, uh, if the I one seemed to be the most appropriate, but at that time we were also literally at, um, the zoning map we updated to reflect the master plan. And as well known, the master plan or the zoning ordinance or the zoning map did not get upgraded on the near property. It stays I one, um, or stayed I one. Um, and somehow, uh, self-storage became a permitted use in R and D. And that was not ever something that was discussed by the committee. We think that it was just a mistake. Um, because the R and D district, um, especially in the industrial order, is is was provided to create tax-based jobs, et cetera. A self-storage use doesn't do that. Um, and one of the things, and I had this discussion with Megan, one of the things that was discussed during the sub, the subcommittee meetings, um, I believe it was this ten year old, you know, specific, twenty twenty-one, um, was the thought that we have R and D properties, not just in industrial part, but elsewhere in within the city. And if we're going to, um, there are certain uses that we were okay with in some of these outline areas, but we weren't necessarily okay with them in the R and D, in the business part, in place versa. And the best way I can say is if I think it is a mistake, if, if planning commissioners and council don't do the tests and state, I mean, you should just leave it. Does it work through a process for that to happen? Or I would think that now that just created a limit. Does that, I know that was a long answer.
Yeah. So then stuff, so we think it was an error that was ever listed as part of R and D. It was added as part of I one.
I one, because we thought the air property was going to be a zone. If we get the zone, we never know that I would look at this.
And there was this whole talk about a special study for Second Street and about wait and so on.
And so the master plan gets updated two years.
Thank you.
Ms. Hubbard.
I have a very detailed question on this. So if it's public hearing for planning permission on the fifth, when would it get to this body? Would be the first year meeting or the second year system?
Um, I would believe second meeting June.
Okay.
It's not a heavy lift. A testament in this case doesn't feel like it's a heavy lift to go from the PC and turn around the review letters and give them.
Okay. But then, and this is more questions for those who aren't planning or anxiety. It's going to be at least a week before it gets published in a newspaper and it doesn't become effective for thirty days after published. So there's going to be like a three, two to three month window where someone can come in with an application to do many storage in R and D and we have to honor it.
I had a heavy conversation with the city or with the city attorney because we are honoring all the process. Um, somebody could have thought that the ordinance could be changed and the city would not be subject to, um, open, it would have to approve it just because it's a community that period of time. Because we've already initiated, you know, which is.
I I guess I would recommend and it's a little bit cleaner if we did a moratorium. If it just came to this body, the next meeting, you said, we're going to do a moratorium, accepting that doesn't need to be too complex because we're already in the process. It's, it's a queen.
I have, I have, he felt interested. So you turning on the cover process for more?
Yeah. It's kind of odd. This mission doesn't really have it clearly defined in the manual. I should be in there.
Okay.
That's it. Thank you.
Okay, for my updates, um, after, after the last city council meeting, um, actually last week, uh, we received an official application for an exation for forty-five acres, um, also known as a portion of the slow key to the property. Um, one of the things that staff is working on is creating what I'm calling proposed development, redevelopment project page on the city's website so that when we get formal applications, not, not just um, pre-application meeting requests, but actual formal applications for projects. Um, we can put them on this website, um, and it would literally have, people would be able to track what's going on um, from the time it's applied for to any particular meeting that's held in a public room. And that would help residents as well as perhaps council and other commissions and boards understand what's going on as part of the processes. What status it's in. Um, the committee that was set up plus time back city council, um, we have a tentative meeting scheduled for this Friday. And we'll see where that goes. It's just a meeting. And we'll see what comes of that. Uh, DDA has, um, has considered the request from their K O, K O to contribute to the Grand Street Drive Connection. And they are contributing fifteen thousand for that project. They have allocated, um, a magic seed amount of five thousand dollars to, um, to a specialized consultant who can help them out with the navigating a pro forma, specifically the M D C one that kind of sales front. And then, um, um, they update or they have approved their budget and have recommended to City Council and in June. And that's all I have. I want to show any questions for me.
Thank you. The Washington County Sheriff's Department's package. Uh, next up is City Manager Report for Justin Easter and Dan. I'm sorry. I apologize.
Yeah, um, good update on Dexter Area Fire Department Board. At the last meeting, the board voted to authorize posting and hiring three additional firefighters. Um, the chief had asked for eighteen total firefighters, which would give two firefighters at every station twenty-four hours a day except for absences and stuff like that. We went halfway, um, because there is concern amongst the board about the increased cost to having all those folks all at once. And also we know that there's going to be an increase in the budget for the current staff that's already there. We did have a fire speak, fighter speak at the meeting to the board, saying that he was not impressed and rather distressed with the pace. And lack of good faith, the firefighters fell with the, the AFD wars negotiating. So that that was kind of discouraging to hear. And it's not on here, but I am represented on the Michigan Municipal League's Economic Development and Land Use Legislative Committee. We have a lot of interesting legislation that's coming down, tools that can be helpful for redevelopment of tricky urban sites. And the interesting thing that popped up is there's a potential preemption of local units of governments related to chickens on properties less than a quarter acre in size. Uh, we did not support it because we support local governments determining what's the right fit, but that was something that prompted out there. So if it passes and gets adopted, if your neighbor has a quarter acre or more, they can have up to five chickens. That's it. Thank you.
Yeah. All right. So before I go into
All right. Before I go into my updates, if anybody has any questions, I can take them. All right. So some of the general things I I have in here, you know, water tower, I'm going to continue what I talked about, like a great job on our staff for the water tower. I mean, I don't know really quick period of time turning that around and get people watering up yours again. Recently, I was at the most recent formal meeting in the. The county representative runs those meetings for us that is presenting a waste calling ordinance for the county. And so they're looking to do things like lucky metrics for trash recycling. Try and find new ways to find powers accountable since, you know, with wilds, collars that are pretty large companies, just finding ways to kind of, you know, work with them in that sense. Creating funding mechanism at the county level related to kind of how. Some of the departments that the county currently get funded through the landfill and looking to assist with other tackles such as introducing all meaningful nothing. On improving recycling percentages and reducing waste. So as we get more information on that, as I go to the formal meetings. I'll bring back more information because I will impact the system extension that way. The whole safety facility user group, we had our first meeting Wednesday last week and went really good. Our next meeting is going to be this Wednesday, cover some additional information. And I listed some of the things that we went through for that meeting in my report here.
I don't know if there are any. I have a question about that. So in that meeting, is the current thinking still pursuing either renovating or building new at eighty one forty? Is there? Are both of the options still on the table?
Yeah, both of those options. I know they got big guests here as well. Time to speak on that as well, but I think both of those are kind of mentioned in that. And then I'm gonna go to Marie for the whole safety facilities bottom sale.
Oh, actually, no, not the bottom part. It's the union negotiations.
Any.
Just to make council aware, the union has ratified the agreement. So in the next meeting, we will have a closed session for council to review the agreement. If it's all good, then work for now.
Congratulations. And a couple of extra things I had in supplement, the Davidson mini girl is now up. So when you get a chance to go by the farmers market, you know. For when it's Saturdays, it's for the local lenders. You'll see it up in the ramp, maybe up in the ramp. So yeah, be a little. He likes to be like, I mean, place side kind of guy. So I shouldn't say exactly. So let's check that out. And the hearts of recreation commission recently was looking at the donation policy. So I would continue that at the discussion. They've been trying to back the council probably in June for for you guys to look at.
Essentially, a lot of his meetings and interactions there. Are there any council members?
I remember that motion and bear with me. I think I got what we did, but please correct me if I'm wrong. And we put the three items on the consent agenda consideration of building payroll, the amount of two hundred ninety nine thousand, two hundred forty dollars and cents. Consideration of setting a poll occurring, no, sorry, consideration of purchase of conference room tables for West Michigan office interiors under the amount of six hundred fifty five hundred dollars. And consideration of appointment of DMS that being to Parks and Recreation Committee.
voting by hover, sent it by Albert. Well, please take.
Michelle's?
No.
Alda? Yeah. Sha?
Yeah.
Yes, hover, yes, Senator.
Yes. The bill was finished business, new business and one consideration of public safety facilities, construction manager, manager. There the motion to approve. I'll make that. We should go to slide. Is there a second? Second by hover. Backward information on the R RQ.
People everyone, let's do the thing. We've had a chance to read through the document. We did a couple of iterations in general. It covers a handful of things, introduction. Instructions, background of the project as it's kind of traveled through. Course and requirements for submitting and evaluation criteria, which it will be reviewed. And then responsible in terms of what it is you're going to get back. And I did. After our last meeting, adjust a little bit our original. Draft and then since then, I've also included, and I don't know if you distributed that or not, Josh. Or we're able to from this afternoon. If not, I do have one statement I'd like to throw out on the floor tonight. Just in case when I have, I have a I have a document that I can jump in a little sentence if you want to consider it being added. It's very simple. We've talked about it before and it's. Regarding including reference to. Guaranteed maximum price. And all is basically stating is that it could be the city's intent after. What the project's going to be, and it's in the red letter right there, that the contract be amended. As the CM moves into phase two, that they will provide a guaranteed maximum price. Which will make it once they pull easier during the course of project. The hesitation, the reason it wasn't there initially was the GMP was traditionally inserted about halfway through the process of. Developing the design. So not everything was known to everyone, but based on reasonable experience by the. Construction manager, David will say, here's what it's going to cost. And I stand behind it, knowing that things are going to zig and zag. Most recently, in the last couple of years, there's been a reluctance to give a GMP halfway through the course of a project. That really is more ending up, as I'm stating there, following the hard trade bidding process. Well, essentially. They have the bids from all the subcontractors and they're adding a little bit, which is a good thing. Just in case to cover things that are gonna arise. So there's a risk for them to do that without all the information. So this is now giving them all the information. They're still gonna add some just in case costs. But you get the rest of ease that anything that comes up isn't going to cost you. It's going to be covered by the. Portions that were included by contingency. You're potentially including contingency that doesn't get spent. My thought process was you hold the contingency. Things are going to come off and you cover the loss based on the real cost, not. And I think if you don't include it, you're probably going to get some voluntary offers that they would do that anyway, the skilled. Sadly, kind of CMs are going to probably offer that to kind of put them in a better light. If you do include that it's going to be a GMP, I'd say that's after hard bidding. That way it won't discourage someone that's not really. Interested in not being participated in. So I think there's. Strength on both sides. You can be required. You might lose a bidder or two. You don't do it, someone is going to offer it as an option possibly anyway. Or you include it like I've stated here, it's following hard bits. So those that might be a little skirmish while doing it. At least they could know that I don't have to provide that guarantee until after I have my hard bits. But it kind of blends both sides together. And in the end, it gives you a little. Peace of mind, knowing that once you've agreed on this is the price and it's going to be. Handled and managed during the design process. So you know where it's trending. It's just a matter of getting the kind of pricing. Because the end result is you have peace of mind knowing that's my guarantee. Everybody knows what the project is. So there's no real guesswork. It's just. It's a shift of risk allocation from you to the CM design building team. So I wanted to throw that out there before I put some position. Now simply put that. Statement and then. So everybody knows that you're wanting to see that. Sorry for the long winded explanation, but I had to get a little back.
So I see in the description of the project on page seventy seven in the packet, it says the initial pre-construction phase will include that story to develop into both a renovation slash expansion scheme to the existing building. And a new build scheme option for city considerations. I'm to the point that I asked for clarification on regarding the second meeting. How common is it that when an RFP like this goes out, there's not clear direction as to whether or not a project is going to be a renovation or a rebuild?
I don't think most owner buildings are in this state of opportunity for one or the other. I wouldn't say it's common, but I wouldn't say it's unheard of. I think there's viable routes for both cases and I think the city desk of the design team is. Show me two final versions of both approaches before we decide. And the CM would would not be shocked or any CM in the. RFP process wouldn't be shocked to see that out there. They may question how much effort in this decision making has gone into this. Up to this point. And I think if they anybody has a concern, it will be raised at the walk through meeting. By asking questions like, have you looked at these things before in terms of new or versus renovation? We can answer that question. They pretty easily that we've studied them. And the the question that remains is. Should we achieve a new building for the cost budget that we have or is renovation really an option? And you're going to get the cross section of both the good options if you ask the CM. Early in the process. And it is time to alone and things refine. Something's going to arise of the obvious, clear, easy thing for one CM over another. There won't be number.
So just a couple of follow up questions on that. Are there any? Dissipations of presenting of presenting in RFP with an unclear direction in terms of the responses you might get? Or like what is this a red flag at all for any potential?
I don't think it's a bad sign. The first part of your question made me think of this is that. A lot of people are very busy and not knowing what it is they're going to end up doing. Could be like, well, I got three little very certain things to do. Why would I want to? Enter into a process that's kind of open ended. That that wouldn't be a red flag, but if you're busy, you want easy certain things versus let me help somebody figure out what they want to do.
So then my last question to that, and if this is something you can answer, if it's for us to determine. What are the pros or cons of waiting to submit this or put it out there until there is that certain direction? If it's supposedly anticipated that maybe if I'm reading the schedule right, August twenty twenty three, this August, we think we would have that clear direction. What's the pro or con of just waiting till then to do this?
The cons of waiting is numbered a couple. One, the expertise that the CM brings to this process of getting us to August. Is clarity now real economies, opportunities, and is it better to do it this way versus that? Meaning you're, you know, and then within either one of those categories, what's the right building type or approach for a new building? There's many new different ways to do a building. And it's relative to what's the available subcontractors in this area, the supply materials in this area. Knowing those things from a builder's perspective, very beneficial to hold in on or on budget or not. And that that was a big part of what we do. The other is we wait adds a little time to the overall process. And schedules escalation, escalation is extra dollars. And from a timing standpoint. I don't want to say we're hurt, but we're heading into the busy construction schedule right now. And people wanting to get queued up or starting construction next spring. Are really trying to line that work up from a bidder's standpoint. We wait till September. A lot of people are booked for springtime. Construction. So not like you're losing all your options, but you might be losing some of the good options. Because they're they're signing a word already for next spring. Pros of waiting, I guess. Is you all know exactly what you're doing before you sign the contract with the construction manager. I don't know how much comfort that gives you. Not knowing the cost of it yet is still a little. And I think really that's the benefit is getting the design solidified. Relative to cost and because I've done estimates, but they're design level estimates, not construction. I really think as our experience working with you all, putting those two things together, how much is it going to really cost is has been rather important.
This is all.
Um, hi, David. So. When you give the information for RFP out, the work that has been done. Design on that site will be shared with with them, right? So in in some sense, they're not really coming into looking at that RFP kind of. Without ideas of the directions that we might go in in. They have some sense of. The project versus. Not having any idea of coming in and saying, okay, are we we run this? So they have some understanding of our thoughts in either direction.
I'll take back my first statement of absolutely. Right now, what we have set up, we have not offered to give them. Plans that we've previously done in. The reason it was, we didn't want to give them something to fall back on later because we we all know it's going to evolve into something more refined than what we were given here. So when it does change, that does give them whoever it might be that to say, oh, way different than I thought. Let's revisit my cost proposal. Well, this is generally saying is if you want you to join the team, help us shape that direction. So when we move along. You're already inserting your information based on what you said you were going to do. Now that being said, they're going to ask the question, have you already done something? And that the walk through. And I think it might be reasonable, certainly reasonable to consider. Issuing something saying, yeah, based on the questions we receive, we're providing you now some information that you've already done. It's all public. Information anyway. So if we give it to them freely, at least they're all looking at the same thing. Last spring's version versus two thousand nineteen's version that they're going online and searching for. These were giving them a consistent amount of information. I wouldn't hesitate to do that if we get a lot of inquiry. About it. But for right now, we have not. Let's keep it a nice clean. You tell us what you think. Join the team. Help us work on it. We'll define it together. It's kind of.
Thank you. Yeah, as you know, we we discussed this in in the design meeting and I think that goal of being able to have them as part of the conversation. Was important.
So.
David, I'm going to play devil's advocate just a little bit here on that one pro that you mentioned. Couldn't the cost formation also be a con, given that part of why we're exploring these two options is to see what makes most money or makes the most sense financially? Whereas am I off on that?
I'm not sure until it's.
Okay, so you're saying that a pro is waiting is so that we know how much we're spending. But having the two options on the table, my belief is that we have those two options on the table. So we see which one of those two options is the most financially responsible.
That is precisely the reason. We want them to help us from a constructor's standpoint, say, it's working out. Do this versus that, or they're the same. Here's the pros and cons from a schedule. The schedule.
So then maybe I misunderstood you. I just thought you were saying waiting until we had a number would be a pro of not doing the RFP. Whatever the others are right now.
No, the the pro for waiting is you have the solution that you want to pursue in hand. It may not be the most cost effective.
Okay.
But you'll know I'm doing this one. Tell me how much. But you'll know I'm doing this one, tell me how much it's gonna cost.
Okay.
And that's the con is where you don't know what's the cost, then you've already made a decision what you're doing. And we wanna kind of track those things together. We want this, this, and this. We'll track the cost. We're coming here in August. I'm gonna have the builder team standing here saying, we got an option for a new building, we have an option for renovation. One costs X plus one, one costs X plus one and a half. Here's the pros and cons, and then you weigh out that. And some of the pros and cons size costs are gonna be operational workflow, longevity, new versus old, or schedule, or move management issues that are gonna come into play. You know, empty meters for downtown, impact partners, a lot of things that are gonna be itemized besides costs that are gonna be important to this.
Thanks, appreciate the clarification.
Okay, um, Mr. Michelle.
Uh, I have a couple of lighter style points. I think it's probably tighter if we use the same term of art that was in the the bond letting in the ballot, which I think is public public safety facility. And if you wanna clarify, I just like to, it's it's more consistent. There are some places where phase one and phase two are capitalized and other places where they're not. Whichever one we choose, it should be consistent. I I suspect having it as a proper number. Those better rest of documents. Just clarify that the the one that the motion was made on has the winter twenty twenty three, not the winter twenty twenty four. Where are the motion makers?
I'm sorry, can you clarify?
Yes, and one in our packets says, uh, final construction documentation, winter twenty twenty four. There's reference that we changed, I just wanted to clarify that. The document that we're discussing with twenty twenty three for final construction documentation.
I can add on to the calendar year, which will be read is twenty twenty four. You can call it twenty three, twenty four, winter.
Okay.
I'll save it in twenty three, twenty four, so there's no.
Yeah, okay. And just in plain language, why are we going with nine million instead of nine point four?
The nine million is the number that I'm familiar with from the directions I've gotten. It's nine point four, I guess, if you make that adjustment.
Cause our bond is for eight point four and we have slightly under a million cash on hand, right? Right? So, yeah.
That was actually an item that made a queue, communicated to me about, um, there there's a lot of options, right? Maybe the four, could be eight point four, could be the, yeah, our expected, the bond deposit, eight point three. So there there is a range there.
So and I guess this ought to be as accurate to what we're expecting in spend. Four hundred thousand could cause people to drop off because they just think we're nuts trying to do that much for that. When we take all the other entitlement and and planning stuff. So if we wanna do nine point four with contingencies or whatever, because we we don't wanna spend that, I think that's far more accurate. See, in the description, it does reference a significant topography changes. I would recommend that we include that portion of the sites within floodplain. That is a area of expertise that some builders don't know. And if you don't know what it is, you're gonna head at buzzsaw, it's gonna hurt them. I would also offer a recommendation that somewhere in here, maybe in the description, that it does reference the potential for charter amendment that could prohibit the use of the site. I know folks don't wanna talk about it, but if someone comes here in November, and folks say, we don't want, we wanna keep that for park. Um, and they haven't been put on notice for that, that's probably not gonna end well. Let's see. There are some other formatting differences, so in some cases, the the one, the the heading is bold and others it's not. And again, I just think it's but it's better for it to be internally consistent formatting. It puts our best foot forward, shows that we pay attention to detail. Uh, we're spending this much money, it'd be good for folks to know that that detail. Um, under section three requirements, I would offer for consideration that we add a qualification that they have built a fire station, not just a similar sized facility. Fire stations are highly specialized, the systems that go in, and it's part of industrial, part residential. And if you've not done that mix, you can build it without sprinklers and then have to come back in later and have to redo all the sprinklers. I know we're not gonna do that. Out of curiosity, is the evaluation committee different than the existing committee we have stood up?
Questions to me, my understanding is the the committee is going to do the first level of evaluation. And then invite several possibly to interview. And then from that process, make a recommendation for the summary too.
Okay, if if we're taking that course, then we can check with the attorney. But if the the committee is not bringing everyone in, it has made a decision. So if we get ten and they only interview five, that's a decision and it's at a public meeting and it has to be notified as such. So that's not a the the process thing, that's a we have to be aware of that to make sure we make a decision for noticing.
Sorry, what do you what do you specify that needs to be done?
So if the subcommittee or the whatever the public facilities committee is called receives ten RFPs, RFQs, they go through the evaluation, they only invite five in and make recommendation to council from those five. They have made a decision to exclude five from the decision making body. So the public facility committee has become a public decision making body that's subject to open meetings act. And so we can do that, just we have to make sure if we go down that street that those meetings are published and and minuteed and all that stuff. I'm good, thank you.
Mr..
What if we just, I mean, because I don't see this committee as a decision making body, and I don't think reasonably any of us really do. I mean, they could recommend five, but keep all ten in whatever they send to us so we can look at it ourselves. And then we don't have to go through the hassle of that other stuff, because I really don't think we set that up to be a decision making body.
Excellent. I learned that. I didn't even think of that a little detail. This is again, we both say, I appreciate that, done with a couple of your points of formatting that you floodplain, then I'll put a statement in there regarding that. As far as the charter amendment, not exactly sure what I need to do to respond to that. Maybe Josh and I can talk tomorrow if you have a chance to talk internally if you need to. And as far as the nine point four goes, any direction on that? Just a little more back, that nine million, in the state of mind, was in the final design process. I was so target nine million in our last summer round of budgeting. I don't know if that was just my assuming to continue it, but I felt like I had that direction. I just need to know if I need to change it. And one of your points is that, I think it does raw and strong on arts, the pool of CMs that would do this, their interest becomes greater when the number gets bigger. Just the reality of all things.
If that number were to be increased to nine point four million, I'm just trying to remember and not trying to put words in, but it's not that. I think I remember MRC was saying, when I asked, do you anticipate this project would cause that full round? What I remember him saying, well, it seems to be that it would be the eight point four with one million as contingency. If um the one million were to be used as contingency, is that something you typically list as a total of nine point four? Or would would you not, if you're anticipating having some contingency, would you not list that in your?
I would list it as a dip of breadth of the project. But I'm specifically saying in here also, the trade cost is a very different number, which basically sets it, hey, there's soft costs already built into this, and that's not gonna erode their construction cost. So CM know both of those things a little bit at ease, knowing that the city is already going through the process and understanding projects cost more than construction cost. So whether it's million plus something, that I think is a little bit irrelevant between the trade cost and total cost. The greater total cost, the more visual interest you're gonna get for someone to show up and at least consider.
So we thought, okay, we have eight point four million in the bond funding, and you know, we've set aside this almost one million dollars. So we had total of almost nine point four, would you recommend? Putting the nine point four, are you willing? Your position to say?
I would put the whole thing, because the question will be at some point, because they're gonna base their price on seven million, based on what I have in here now. They're gonna say my fee relative to seven million is X. If that seven million through the phase one looks more like seven point four, let's say. Their phase two fee could go up legitimately, go up because the product's changed. And that could be the effect, nine point four is a total project cost. So the best place to put the extra money is the trade cost, not the soft. So I put the realistic number, whatever you you're comfortable with, I put the real number.
Mr..
Well, that mind, I I wouldn't say we should put nine point three. If you're saying that the bond cost is gonna be eight point three, then you don't even have quite a million for the contingency.
So on the discussion about the amount, where I suggested is there is a motion to amend to whatever amount we were going with, or wherever someone wants to take motion here second and discuss it. So.
I'd like to move to make a few amendments based on what we have, what it's time, okay? Then let's start with that one. I I think that we put nine point three million in there, so. We'll get in there right now and nine.
Second.
Okay, any discussion, Mr. Southern?
I should have said, just to clarify that, can we write in there that clarification that is, that a million is for contingencies from the general fund?
You could, I don't think it adds to anything.
For that. Okay, then no one, nine point three five.
What suggestion Mayor Q had made was to state explicitly that that not did include contingencies.
I will put that a bit.
I, yeah, I mean, I I think in here.
So I'm not gonna specify anything else on the including.
Mr. Michelle, are you okay with that? Thank you.
I have a question about this process of amending things. So there's a motion to amend the document, that's not necessarily approving it. This, we're maybe going through a process now, we're gonna be motioning to change a document, and then there will be a final motion to adopt the document as the list.
Great, they already have the full threshold support right there for the entire RFP, RFQ. And now there's a motion to amend to nine point three with contingencies.
But it would still ultimately come back to a motion to start to vote on that first.
Yes, the amendment will be decided and then the main motion is there's additional amendments. Any other discussion on that? Okay, Mr. Southern, for the amendment to amend the nine billion dollars listed to nine point three million.
Michelle?
Yes.
Yep, Albeck?
Yeah.
Schla?
Yeah.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Sammy Carroll?
Yes. Okay, what's your discovery?
Maybe, I don't know, I'm gonna see if anyone else has any. Maybe I should just make the motion. I I I wanna at least discuss the idea, so I move that we add a qualification that they have experience with fire station construction. I'll second that.
Should be specified, I'm sorry, interjecting a little more. Then if you're saying that, I would say maybe how many, and within some time period? The fire station within the last five years is very different than the station of previous. And you could list two stations, three stations.
Do you have a recommendation?
I would say one, one, we want to be knowledgeable, and if they've done one in the last five years, it's not gonna be that much different than two. But you're not gonna eliminate some of the potential. And we really wanna get, I think, five, six solid qualified bidders, and I don't wanna eliminate them. It's not true of two stations. A big recommendation. Very big then?
Yeah, I only have a question that you sort of clarified that question. So if one is, I would be fine with one also, because I don't wanna limit our pool of people so severely. But I do agree that it would be in our best interest to have someone that has some knowledge and experience in moving this. So now would you be okay with at least one in the past five years?
Yes.
I would be fine with that.
Okay, so the motion is to amend to add qualification, at least one fire station project experience within the last five years. Any other comments or discussion? Mr. Southern?
Albeck? Yes. Breton? Yeah. Michelle?
Yes.
Schla?
Yes.
Hubbard? Yes. Sammy Carroll?
Yes. Okay, any other motions to amend the RPRQ? Okay, do you have?
Sorry, Joe, um, just adding this language. So um, I move that we add the language proposed for section two, project background and overview.
Thank you.
One second.
Southern? Hey, the motion to amend the main motion to include the red text on the document that's on the table to add the guaranteed maximum price for construction following our bit higher treaty. So any other discussion, questions, comments? Mr. Southern?
Albeck? Yes. Hubbard? Yeah. Michelle?
Yes.
Breton? Yeah. Schla?
Yes.
Sammy Carroll?
Yes. Are there any other amendments? Any other discussion on the main motion? Mr..
Yep, so I do feel like the element in the room is the submitted charter amendments petition signatures. And they total nearly two hundred fifty. Earlier in this meeting, we heard from, if I found this correct, sixteen people who all had a clear opposition to the proposed project at eight one eighty Main Street. And that took about thirty minutes, like my, you know, if I was watching the clock rate. Imagine, and I don't know if that affects your decision making at all in that project. Suppose though, it was nearly two hundred fifty people who signed the petition came and spoke on this item and took approximately that same amount of time per group of sixteen. That equates to nearly eight hours of public comment. Eight hours of people saying, this is not the direction we want to pursue. It would be three o'clock in the morning before we would be getting to any other part of this agenda. So you guys obviously know how I feel about this. I am here to just amplify the voice of those people who maybe feel like signing petition is enough and and don't feel compelled to come to each and every meeting on this topic. So I'm just here again to amplify the voice to imagine, you know, as a public comment against this direction. For whatever that's worth.
Mr..
I wanna say that's absolutely a false comparison. The people who came tonight came to express their concerns at a very early stage in the process. The people who signed this petition, in my opinion, were misled. The vote had already been done by the people to allow us to build at either location. We had then voted as a council to choose this location. And so to me, those are two very vastly different things. And I think it's it's really reckless to imply otherwise.
Mr. Michelle?
Uh, clarification is the understanding that the description includes floodplain reference that we're going on, or do we need a moment for that?
The comment was that some including that would be then, according to stuff like they would be pleading some of the. The comment was that some including that would be then, according to stuff like they would be pleading some of the terminology, maybe considered technical, uh, doing that, but.
I just wanted to clarify, make sure that everyone knows what we're going.
As long as we're using officially, federally published, look plain back. We'll check that.
Mister Chairman, for much rather progression, one of the main housekeeping wise, the access permit for vendors to get on to city property. I'm going to also include some statement of that, so it's not a surprise. It's kind of the the normal now versus Dexter. Well, it wasn't in his first draft, and it didn't do that as a open way. Good. Thank you, Mr. Shalhoub.
I just want to make the staff and reporting secretary clear on what the motion is now.
It was going to be stated.
Okay, thank you. Don't take down that little wish.
Are there any other comments, questions? Okay, what we have is motion to approve the public safety facility instruction manager RPRQ document presented. Support by Hubbard with the following amendments that have been approved to nine point three million dollars instead of nine million dollars. Uh, qualification included one fire station experience, uh, build experience within the last five years. And also the addition of the ENP statement that was presented tonight. So any other questions or comments? Okay, please go go.
Alda? Yes. Michelle's?
No.
Hubbard? Yes. Griffin? No. Schla?
Yeah.
Sammy Carroll?
Yes. Pass the amendment. All right. N two is consideration of the barn improvements for an structure tech restoration policy and not fixing fifteen thousand one hundred fifty out. Is there a motion? Figure of purpose? Um, N two was.
Okay, sorry, it's just the next, the the K three of the incentive, I'm sorry, I'll shut up.
No, that's okay, it's previously K four, and how it is, like, maybe it's. For the barn improvements, is there a motion for the mountain to exceed fifty one thousand one hundred fifty out?
I'll make a motion. My second.
Motion by Hubbard, second by Alda. Any comments? Mr. Shalhoub?
So, two questions, I guess. Was this originally included in the budget? And if my request is correctly, it wasn't, but this is what the most recent budget amendments anticipated including? Is that what it's going to come across? I'm not sure.
So in last year's fiscal year budget, as we were, I saw earlier, we did some budget fifty thousand for DPW storage, and so this would be fifty five thousand, fifty five thousand for the DPW storage, this will be, yeah, the substitution for that.
So anticipating that the barn will be used for DPW storage?
Then it currently is being used for some storage and due to keep some equipment in there. Um, we utilize it for, and the barriers that we see down there, so we do store our equipment there already.
So in a recent meeting, we talked about potentially storing a fire truck there? Is there a fire truck along with the DPW storage?
That's me, I can't answer that, just I don't know size of it.
And my last question is consequences of waiting to do this work? Or are they, would you characterize that as urgent?
Well, just, so I think the the main thing we're going to do for this year is just because we had a budget already for this fiscal year, so I think I don't really have a clear answer for priority on it. But the main thing, I think, for 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 staff, though, especially, if we're being in a new building now, doing these renovations will, you know, fix up the building, bring it up to a better end as well, because most of the work is going to be exterior and places to the doors. So again, it comes down to like, there's just a security aspect, we walk around, see those doors out there, I mean, the valves rustling out, the wooden one on the side, you know, it's not great, so a lot of it, I think, would be, it's both kind of some lower security plus kind of aesthetic improvements that would that it will still be in that versus.
Mr. Shalhoub?
I'm sorry, Josh, you were right, and I was looking at a different number. I just wanted to, you know, to reiterate that we had this in a memo from six twenty seven twenty two when we reviewed the budget, as Josh said, and we put that in the budget for fifty thousand for improvements for DPW storage. And then in the memo, we looked at at our four twenty six twenty twenty three budget workshop, there's an additional ten thousand in buildings and grounds department for additional barn improvements, which I think is trying, could be trying to catch whatever we may need to do to temporarily use that as a fire station, and the last thing I'll say, or not fire station, uh, fire truck storage. The other thing I'll say is like, in my opinion, waiting, if we wait on this, we put ourselves in a box because we have we have rude language that has this location as a potential place to renovate and use for the fire department. Um, so I think, you know, it's in our best interests and already budgeted for to go forward with this now.
Mr. Shalhoub?
Sorry. Some questions to clarify the scope of work. This does not include any work on the roof.
Correct, we did receive, in one of the bids, we did receive some additional fresh on the roof, but the roof added an extended cost, that's something that we plan to do in the future.
What was the extra cost? Is it twenty, a hundred?
More than a hundred, whatever was, let's see. It was twenty five, thirty five thousand additional work to do, and that was just for, I believe, twelve, it was just for.
Okay.
It's like.
And has the roof been inspected as a watertight?
I'm not. I'm inspection, but I'm not sure I'm watertight.
Okay, and this does not include any painting for the wood on the upper floor?
This would be painting of the wood on the second core exterior and concrete block exterior.
Okay, I guess I missed that. So there. Are these folks licensed to do lead paint removal? Is that part of the packet received from them?
I did not, that doesn't have the exact specification.
And is it going to include any electrical work inside the building?
No electrical work.
No heating work?
No walls.
Heating?
No heating.
All right. Um, the window replacement, is it going to be like for like with two separated lights, or is it going to be a single panel? Do they give any description on the ultimate one?
I think the 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 gist when we talk, especially the vendor, I I had recommended in the packet, was try to do windows as similar as possible, but those are both options, so.
So right now, we don't know.
I have to do the specific on the side.
All right, and it sounds like we haven't had any discussions about how fire truck could fit in there and how this may impact that, would that be fair?
I have those for the for that nothing. So I think when it comes to the work that would be completed, since most of it is all, or almost all is going to be exterior, windows and doors, I think it leaves it open for that was the decision how to want to make to utilize that facility. It won't be like we're doing a ton of work to basically just build that up. I don't know if that really answered my question.
Okay, well, I ask because I like, I don't like to spend money doing something and then undoing it, so if we know there's a fire truck going to have to go through the door, I'd rather make sure that the door can fit it now. Uh, have we had structural inspection of the interior? You know, we need any work in there?
Uh, I'm not sure, that was created in.
And was structure tech restoration one of the three folks who submitted the time of the business? Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Motion is to approve the improvement from structure tech restoration, I was seeing about not fixing fifteen one thousand one hundred fifty dollars.
Hubbard? Yes. Michelle's?
No.
Alda? Yeah. Schla?
Yeah.
Griffin? No. Sammy Carroll?
Motion passes for the two. Uh, four more, I am K five. New business seven, three, seven public period for eighteen fifteen Main Street ordinance, June twenty six twenty twenty three. Is there any motion?
A second.
By Alda, second by Hubbard. Uh, Mr. Shalhoub?
Yeah, I didn't pop this one up, but I did have a couple of questions, I guess we could do right now, under insurance and public liability. It seems like it switches to contractor instead of tenant. Is that by design, or is it just a weird admission that it's going to copy it and pace it by time?
It's probably just the the language comes out of what's in the engineering standards, which is the contractor that is easily rectified.
Okay. But that thing in this more vehicle liability, is that of course for us renting real estate when there's not a place for it to be, if you want it?
So if you think about, um, when Mr. Thomas had the problem, he had a vein that was on the company coming along with his, his area at that time. Um, and the grills are also somewhat noble, and so I would think that at the minimum, that's there to protect in the event of someone, which we asked.
So perhaps massaging the tenant or its whoever shall have more reliable or any vehicle on the property. Because they, if they have something that's never there, we don't care, it's not going to. And the way this is written, they could have it for a different vehicle that they're not actually parking. Right, that's all I can.
Any other questions or comments?
I.
I'm sorry, Mr. Shalhoub?
Yeah, I was just wondering, Michelle, if you could just walk us through the process that got us to this one relation, and maybe that was just described somewhere, but the last one is that potentially the original owner was going to have a separate business out of it, but you're saying now that's not, right, then you don't, he's not.
Okay, any work that he is doing inside catering is for the tenant that we've got a lease for. So then the work he is working.
Okay, so then what about the lease is changing from what we previously?
Um, the language was cleaned up so that it, instead of this being considered the lease for Hotel Kimon, this is a commercial lease for the property, it's with Melissa McClure, um, not a business, but she's the agent for Trucklight and Barbecue LLC. And then the I did clean up a little bit of the, um, of what her operation is. Previously, it was listed as, um, home food service. It, this is, she, she's giving a rationale, it's carried out, um, food services, so they tightened up that, um, language. The basic foundation of this statute hasn't changed, but the numbers for what the total of the risks are, um, I did correct those because I didn't just tell them.
Could we see the next time, um, we're asked to consider the, a red line burden of what was approved the last time? So the fine, and then the red line, yes. And I guess since this is, um, we are making other changes to the document, I'm going to go ahead, and if I'm allowed to, move that we increase the rent to nine hundred twelve dollars per month, and whenever that increases annually, ten thousand nine hundred forty four dollars. That's right, second, yeah, please. Just moving to increase the rent to nine hundred twelve dollars a month for ten thousand nine hundred forty four dollars annually, so that what we're actually charging up for rent is market rating and consistent with cost of consumer price index inflation increases since we originally started leasing the property.
I don't think they, we already, we already voted on that.
I guess it's not clear to me since we're making other edits to the document, it seems like another edit to the document. I don't, I'm not a Robert tools, she knows, so. One second, hit the diet.
Yeah, I, I certainly want to start, but I guess we'll go ahead and do it.
I just want to point out, or ask questions slash point out, are we not just going to set up public hearing? We're not approving anything right now, we're just hoping we get kicked in the door to talk to us about this, correct?
Right.
So I want to understand why we're trying to make changes. When we can make them after the public hearing is my point. After we hear from people.
Mr. Shalhoub?
Yeah, so I think the rationale is that you want the public to be properly noticed as to what action you anticipate taking at that meeting as close as possible. So if there are changes you anticipate making in advance of it, I think it's better to, you know, the public says there's a public hearing, I see what that means. And if there are ten things we've talked about doing, but we haven't made those changes, it just seems like it would be better to think in front of them than behind. That's my rationale. I just, same one.
Yes.
I totally agree with that, but in terms of changing the lease cost, you know, like Joseph, like Mr. Shalhoub said, we, um, we already called it, we are not to do that, and I think that that's something that if I'm a member of the public, I would like to come and talk about that specifically, I mean, I don't know really what else there is to talk about, but I, I mean, I think some of these changes, I agree that getting ahead of it is good, but something that we already go down, I don't see what form is.
Did you want to make that motion for a minute?
Uh, I guess it's fine, it did.
Is there a second?
That's going to be a thing.
Okay, no second to the motion. Um. Right, there are no other, any other comments or questions? For approval of second of public hearing for eighty fifteen Main Street ordinance for June twenty six twenty twenty three? Please go go.
Hubbard? Yes. Alda? Yes. Schla?
Yes.
Griffin? Yes. Michelle's?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes six. Uh, and four, formerly case seven, uh, consideration of Michigan or NCC liquor license request from Unforfeited.
I think the changes from recommendation to approve that.
Regulation to approve, yeah.
Yeah, I'll make that.
There's a second?
My second.
Motion by Hubbard, second by Alda. To recommend approval of NCC liquor license request from Unforfeited. Any comments, Mr. Shalhoub?
Yeah. I just clarification, does this club liquor license qualify as a private club according to Arizona amendments?
So it's not a private club in the sense of, um, equals or, 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 it's a private club as it pertains to the NCC licenses. This particular format. It's the same type of license that I have in our, it's, it's based on membership. You can hear, or most people utilize or purchase alcohol, remember, this is not. The approval of this license is part of the, um, it does coincide with either of them to put a petition in zone if they have. Um, it doesn't mean that if they were to be another, um, that there are people that consider or, um, a membership organization, like a next point, or equals, or whatever entity. a membership organization like a non-qualmism or equals or whatever other entity. I hope that answers your questions.
Yeah, but so for zoning purposes, this is accessory to the theater. It's not a private club.
Correct.
Yeah, that's.
It's accessory to the theater.
I asked that because private club is a different, it's a type compared to public here.
Yes.
Just clarify, the note here says that initial rezoning map, rezoning amendments, um, cafe bar concessions area, the swag shop for theater patrons only.
Correct.
But it's only for members of the Uncohortated, correct? Not just Joe Schmo who walks into catch and play, they have to be a member.
Right, for this, the, the liquor control requires membership and Uncohortated has to be able to demonstrate how they do that. For our zoning, it's anything true. But this supersedes.
Then have they presented to us how they're gonna control, making sure it's only members?
Um, no, when they got this, uh, we already have, almost two years ago, um, that was not something that came up. It's, it's something the liquor commission will have to, it's under their burden to.
They haven't received any complaints related to the use since it's been operational? All right, thank you.
Sorry.
I just want to say that I have worked this exact scenario for a number of years as a theater professional. And if they don't do it right, the liquor control commission's gonna revoke it, but I mean, there's easy ways to track this. It's, you know, it's, it's not that complicated.
Any other comments? Uh, motion is to recommend approval of M L C C liquor license request for theater. Please take it.
Schla? Griffin? Yes. Other? Yes. Alda? Yes. Michelle?
Yes.
Senator?
Yes. Motion passes six. And bother, formerly K eight, consideration of change order to face to environmental services. Items on the table tonight. Um, memo from Justin, this is right, Michelle, and just, same, just with a, for. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Um, so you, uh, back in April tenth, council was asked for a review, excuse me, the phase two environmental psych investigation assessment at eighty one forty, um, and that would be done by A S T I, and it was in an amount that took exceed fourteen thousand two hundred dollars. The, during the review of the, uh, public property access permit, um, it was discovered that the scope that A S T I provided, didn't have waste characterization, which is testing soil, storage, and disposal, uh, in the event that any contaminated waste or spoils, or the result of any, the drilling or groundwater testing. So, um, uh, what you have is your memo from partners that they did get a change order from A S T I. It's for a total of thirty one hundred fifty dollars. That does increase the total cost of the phase two to seventeen thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. Instead. It's more of a, it was on the consent agenda.
No.
It was on the consent agenda, agenda to keep you informed as to what's going on with the project.
Before we ready for, is there a motion to approve this?
I'm sorry.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Albert, second.
Second.
Second, Michelle. Any comments or other questions?
I have a question. I asked, come on. So you said it was added to the consent agenda to keep us aware of the process. You said it was added to the consent agenda so that council was aware of what was happening with the process. Would I have otherwise needed to come to council given the dollar value or not?
No, no. But we did it to keep right on.
But you need our, you, so you don't, you don't need our approval?
We technically know because the purchasing allows up to five thousand units straight away. Um, respectfully, understanding the contentiousness of this project, step either on the side of caution and either on the consent agenda to keep you on everyone. To keep things as impactful as possible.
Okay. Uh, so the date on the memo is five nineteen. I'm just curious.
The date of the memo.
On the back, the memo from David Gatten?
Yes. So there are two things going on.
Yeah.
Um, I'm reviewing the public property access permit. I let partners know that this was missing in the scope. So they got the, um, the revised scope from the S T I. And then David was out of town, Steve was out of town, Ward was out of town. And this was as soon as they could give us the memo. For, for the change order. Because it's not something that is gonna come to us directly from A S T I. Because partners is the one who hired to handle the project.
So, so when did we get that?
Five nineteen.
We got, oh, I'm sorry, I'm so interested, I apologize. We got it last Friday. Okay. So I guess, yeah, my end of the problem is it seems like there's been a couple of times now where we get substantive information relative to agenda item in a supplement, which gives us very little time to review it, and I understand in this case, we may not have even needed to see this at all. So I think I'm just making a general comment that I am not inclined to take action on items for which the specifics for an agenda item are only given to us within an hour before the meeting, the same day before the meeting. Uh, for other reasons, I won't be supporting this, but I just wanted to make that comment that, uh, I appreciate being cut across of this, and I recognize that we don't necessarily even need our approval for this. But it's just happened at a few meetings recently where we get things from a supplement that are substantive and relate specifically to what even we're being asked to consider, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Michelle.
I, I have a question aimed at improvement processes. Um, so it's not meant to throw darts. Who missed the waste characterization sampling? Um, in the process, because that seems, if you look at a sandworm map, it's gonna say the way around storage tanks here. So it shouldn't have been known that this was something that had to happen. We know.
The, I, I can't imagine.
Just a second, I think probably we can pull off on that if you want to make any council comments or edit for the next bid or something, but I mean, I don't think that's personally approved.
Well, it could be if, if the scope that A S T A, the A S T I bid on should have been comprehensive.
Understood.
And so.
Do you have any other comments or questions on the motion?
Summer? Yes. Griffin? No. Michelle's?
No.
Alda? Yes. Schla? Senator?
Yes. Motion passes N six, formerly K three, consideration city nine, city twelve, money sign to grant assigned company for a amount that takes fifteen thousand dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
Make that motion.
Second? Schla? Um, Mr. Michelle, do you guys have?
Yeah. Yeah, so, uh, questions, had we, had there been any consideration for putting a wall sign on the building? And I raise that because the intent of the sign is to guide folks to where they're going. And if this sign is parallel with the face of the building, you're not gonna see it until you're right in front of it in an area between railroad tracks and another one. Whereas we have a giant wall, we put a sign there, Dexter City Hall, people will be able to see it from a block and halfway. So I'm curious if that was part of this discussion, why it may not have gotten here instead of this.
So are you talking about the face, the wall facing broad or the wall facing the railroad tracks?
Facing railroad tracks.
So unless I'm completely mistaken, the ordinance allows for walls like these that run orange, so that case would be basically facing road. I'll go back and I'll double check it. But that's what my reaction is, I think, you know. Um, if you thought that a limestone sign, um, could still be seen, um, I think that was. That is best I can do, yes, sir.
Um, did they say why in this bid, if this is, it won't be the sign that'll be there, the lick and stick brick sign with metal casing is very different from the sign? Is the reason why their, their materials didn't include limestone and actual masonry?
So we're still really early on this design process, so I, so John, what would Johnson's doing, the way to do is provide us the design which they're currently working on, and Johnson had originally done the Dexter and Albert sign, but under Kieran's sign. And so they're looking to get, you know, different elements that you can, you know, make a physical picture of the pots and stuff. And then we're gonna go into a design, so they're, so you know, we're, we're not at the point where it's like this, this siding, the material, just yet, but why I put the Dexter and Albert sign in here is we're gonna try to keep the, the sign as close as possible and keeps them available.
Okay, because their, their bid says, similar to existing sign, however, it will not have cast stones around or caps. That seems like this fifteen thousand dollars has already made that material decision. And I guarantee you doing limestone and real masonry is not gonna reduce the cost. Lastly, this sign is a bit dated compared to more recent ones. We've gone more with the, the stone, uh, like a piece part. And the other ones was the main rationale for going with this design versus the more fatal design.
I think it's, well. The thing that, so, right, me and Justin's discussion, this was the sign that we're basing. There's the main kind of monument signs coming in, uh, I can, but I will do those, I can't look at piece part, keep that in mind as well. Because it does, as you said, it does take against some of the other elements that we use in our science now. But this was the sign that we kind of decided not going with and matching.
All right, I, I am going to postpone, um, to allow staff time to clarify what options we may have with wall sign and to clarify the materials.
I'll sign here.
I'm sorry, Mr. Griffin, second?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, it's been moved by Michelle, second by Griffin to postpone until additional work is, or investigations. Any discussions or comments about postponement? Please follow.
Griffin? Yes. Summer? Yes. Alda? Yeah. Michelle's?
Yes.
Schla? Senator?
Yes. Okay, that was N six. I think, so you're correct, I think that's all for new business. Okay. Um, nonparticipation, does anybody in the audience listen to address council, please, go forward and state the name and address. While you're shaking your head. Okay, uh, council comments, um, starting with Mr. Michelle.
What, uh, just want to explain why I voted no consent agenda, we appointed someone to the, to our parts board, and there's no materials about the person besides the name. Um, I need to know who I'm doing, I read contracts before I signed, so that was my thoughts on that. That's all. Thank you. Mr. Griffin?
I took a quick Google about renewing defeated motions at another time, and it appears that it, that is allowed via Roberts rule. So it's officially called renewing the motion. Um, the, uh, I think moving to reconsider at the same meeting is something where you have to go to the prevailing side to reconsider at the same meeting, but it does seem like you can review failed motions. Anybody can do that at a later meeting. Thanks.
We saw that.
Yes, um, a few comments. One, I want to say how I appreciated all the residents that, um, came tonight to voice their opinion regarding a project. Um, it, it is great to have the ability to hear from all of them, even though at this point of the project, this is just conceptual design that is being considered with, um, our planning commission, but it is always, um, great to hear from our residents on that. Um, in, there was a comment made about the, the petition that was, um, that could impact our decisions on the, on the fire station and such, and it was phrased as elephant in your room, um, that it was not being considered and such. Um, I just want to remind us that the council members that put that petition, um, forward and formed that committee, um, kept it hidden from the council for as long as they could. Um, so they were not very transparent in bringing it us for us to be able to make any decisions based on that being there, so um, I want to make that point. Another thing in terms of, um, I wanna say that how much I appreciate the work of the staff. I know that in all the departments, you are not only, um, short staff, but also, um, it's that, um, you are working in an environment with Justin being out, so thank you for the, the work you put through. I know how much it is on, on Josh, um, moving things forward, so I appreciate that. And on, on that note, um, as a person that has had the privilege of having team members for the last thirteen years, there's a phrase that, um, really resonates with me, and that is, be the boss you want to work for. That's been fact that we treat our, um, our staff when we sit around that table, and we should all think of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Michelle, you know. So.
I'm sure just to thank you, and I want to thank you, and Josh for stepping up tonight in the absence of Justin and Sean. You guys did a great job, and, um, also congratulations to Justin, um, he ended up having the baby, and I agree with all of it, it's nice to see people here tonight. Um, it gives me a good sense of who I might wanna get out and talk to, or, you know, what, what we can do to talk to the community. Um, it's nice to see people at this early stage in a project so that we get a feel for what people are thinking.
Mr. Figure, figure, or you know.
Go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, proposed agenda items for future meetings, are there any proposed agenda items? None? Entertaining a motion to adjourn. Loop by Albert.